So our first order of business is the minutes from September 11th. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Are you listening?
Yeah, I'm listening. Always listening.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we would like to change the order tonight and deal with 1820 Clyde Road first because it's a much simpler project, we believe. And so please tell us what you --
Good evening. My name is Bruce Fitzsimmons. I'm representing the petitioner, Aaron Miller. Mr. Miller is seeking an amendment of an existing special permit with respect to condition, special condition number eight, which requires by reference to a plan, a three-foot wide landscape buffer zone at the edge of his existing parking lot where it would run up against the lot line with the neighbors. And I believe that you probably have a copy of a plan. If not, I have five extras that I can provide to you.
So is there, is there no staff?
You have that. You have that. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the laptop, but the planning board has the plan you have.
Okay, very good. So the plan shows on the left side of the driveway where the three-foot wide buffer would be, and it also shows the width of the existing driveway has, you may recall from looking at the plan online, there is a little bit of a bump out or a bay window. What the plan doesn't show, but is also present, is the close for the chimney. That chimney close begins at approximately five feet up from the elevation of the driveway. And because of its location, it is a barrier for the parking of vehicles and the access through the driveway because vans and SUVs, pickup trucks and the like wouldn't have sufficient clearance under that. So although the driveway is shown on the plan as being 13 feet wide, that effectively eliminates two feet of the width there. My client, Mr. Miller, who is here, has informed me that he has a vehicle which is approximately five and a half feet wide, and it has some rather wide swinging doors. So if both doors were opened at the same time, it's a total of 14 feet in width. Am I right on that, Aaron? Does that sound right?
No, I'm hearing it wrong.
Oh, I'm pretty sure I'm right on that. So the problem would be that if three feet of the driveway were to be removed, Mr. Miller would be stepping out of his vehicle into this landscaped area, which over time would tend to denigrate from the appearance of that area, but also in the wintertime, since you can't easily remove snow and ice from that location, it could become a danger.
Let's cut to the chase. What do you, what would you like to have happen?
What we're looking for is a recommendation to the ZVA that would allow Mr. Miller to eliminate the requirement for the landscape buffer that separates the two driveways, that his driveway and his neighbor's. Functionally, right now, those two driveways work as a shared driveway, and the impact of removing the paving there and putting in the landscaping would also have a detrimental impact on the neighbor whose driveway is even thinner than Mr. Miller's driveway. I do have some photographs also that I can share with the board if you'd like to help, that will help illustrate the current layout.
So are you going to give us this brief staff report, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, as the applicant has indicated, it's located in a T or two-family district, and they've asked to amend the previous condition that was granted that allowed them to add an accessory unit to the existing two-family, so in effect is a three-unit building. The previous special permit that granted them the right to have those units required that there be a three-foot planted buffer along the edge of the driveway. And in terms of the permit history, there's also a couple of previous co-compliance orders regarding front yard parking, which is related to the same issue of the parking, stacked parking in the driveway, which would be for all the parking for the units. They've requested an amendment to the condition number eight that requires that three-foot buffer on the lot line with the adjacent property. The staff would find, make the following recommended, recommended findings. In terms of the first one, the specific site is an appropriate location for such use structure or condition. We would find that that's not met. The 13-foot driveway, which comes from the bay window to the edge of the property, you know, the applicant has suggested that the chimney stack, which is not shown on that site plan, further reduces that. That's not closer to the property line than the bay window. It is lower to the ground than the bay window, so it does prevent the suggested alternative that the staff put in the staff report of perhaps double stacked parking and shortening the driveway. So that, that really isn't the solution. I would agree that the chimney stack prevents that from happening. So in terms of that first criteria, again, staff would suggest that that's not been met. The second criteria, the use as developed, would not adversely affect the neighborhood. Staff found that there are existing situations very similar to this throughout the neighborhood, so that is a bit of an existing pattern and not that inconsistent with some of the existing situations. Third one, there'd be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. You know, I think the relationship of requiring the buffer isn't necessarily one in terms of creating a hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, so we did find that that was met. Adequate and appropriate facilities to be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And again, the use was approved with five parking spaces in a stacked pattern, so the applicant can meet that condition by utilizing five stacked spaces. Based on that, staff would recommend denial of the request to remove the buffer and again, retain the condition and remove the asphalt from that three-foot planting strip and retain the condition that was approved originally with the special permit.
So after all that, your recommendation then is?
To deny the request to remove the condition that they have a vegetated buffer.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but there was a reference to illegal parking in the front yard. That's specifically allowed under the existing special permit, and that is, excuse me, just a moment. On page three of the existing special permit, under the findings and facts, the site provides three legal parking spaces stacked along the left side of the house. The petitioner will provide a fourth and fifth space at the mouth of the driveway side by side. These spaces are considered front yard parking and are allowed at the discretion of the board. A fourth legal space could be considered further back into the yard, and the finding was that that would pose no nuisance or serious hazard. My client has been using, or that portion of the special permit, to have side-by-side parking at the mouth of the driveway, with the understanding that that was specifically allowed by the special permit. I would also point out, he's been contacted with respect to an enforcement matter on that, and I would like the record to show that that may have been a mistake on the part of the enforcement, zoning enforcement officer, thinking that the general idea is that there's no front yard parking allowed under the zoning ordinance, but I think the special permit speaks to that directly. With respect to the other finding, or recommendation, I should say, my client is willing to consider an alternative to the current situation, and what he would propose would be the installation of a three-foot wide porous paver system that would allow for a couple of the goals of the zoning ordinance to be met, namely water retainerage for drainage purposes, where the porous pavers would absorb runoff, and also it would have a pleasing aesthetic purpose, which I think are the two underlying rationales for having a landscaped area between the two driveways.
I don't know what this is that you're putting down, the three-foot thing that you're suggesting. What, what is this?
Oh, a porous paver system. There are lots of examples. I did take a, find a photograph, if I may approach.
Yeah.
So this is, this one example, just one example of many possibilities, and they can be different colors, different types of materials. Many of them are quite aesthetically pleasing.
So when this was submitted originally, the staff didn't see this, did they? So this is a new wrinkle in the proposal?
It's a, yes, it is.
So.
Would you like a reaction to that? Yeah, I, I would suggest that pervious pavers do represent an opportunity for some infiltration, but as opposed to a natural area, much less than that. It certainly does not provide any vegetation or any of the other stormwater benefits that a vegetated buffer would have, and there's certainly many of other, many other examples where property owners have suggested, you know, a paver system as a way to pave a driveway or pave a buffer strip, and that's not something that we've permitted in the past. So pervious pavers, I don't think would address the concern of creating a vegetated buffer.
So any questions from, or comments from board members?
Yeah, I, I need some clarification because what you're telling us the special permit allows is not reflected in the site plan that we were given along with this request. This, this site plan that we were given shows five cars parked alongside the house and no parking in the front yard. So I'm, I'm confused about what's being presented here.
It may help, I have a photograph of, this is a.
The petitioner's property sounds like it's parked here, and you can see that there's a vehicle parked.
I see that it's parked there. I went and visited the site, and I saw that it was parked there. My question is, according to the plan that was submitted with this request, that is not a legal parking space, and I'm looking for some document that shows me that it is a legal parking space.
I would refer, refer you back to the actual special permit itself, when the board back in 1994 recognized that there could be front yard parking.
But it's not reflected on this 2004 survey.
I see that.
So I'm asking what is, in fact, permitted now? Not what could be, but what is permitted now for this location?
Well, I think that the purpose of the plan was, that was submitted with this application was really to show the buffer area to the board, not to illustrate the actual parking on the site.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interject?
Yeah.
You know, clearly I have concerns about the, the front yard parking, and we can certainly address that. But the request before each night isn't about the front yard parking, it's about the elimination of the requirement to create the vegetated buffer along the property line. So if we could, I think it would be better if we focused on that issue, and I can certainly address the front yard parking issue with the applicant.
Any other comments, Jason?
Thank you. Well, so if I'm understanding correctly, even if you eliminate, I'm hearing like feedback, and people hear me okay? So even if you were to install the three-foot buffer, you would still have a 10-foot driveway, according to this, from the projection to the edge of that buffer?
That's correct.
Which seems ample. A nine, you know, a typical parking space here is eight foot six, so a 10-foot driveway, mine is probably not much wider than that. I guess another question is, I mean, does this site require five or even six parking spaces? I mean, wouldn't most of the parking be occurring at the park further back when you have even more width than that 10 feet because you don't have to deal with the projection?
Well, it's a bit of a choke point, and it has a practical matter. I think that what my client and his neighbor will do from time to time is particularly if you're one of the cars parked in the most interior space in the stack, is that sometimes they will use, temporarily use the other person's driveway for being able to go around the cars that are preventing access out to the street, as opposed to moving three vehicles to get the most interior car out, so.
Be that as it may, that's the situation now. If he had a neighbor who wasn't as cooperative, it would be, this would be what he'd be dealing with. The other thing I want to say is, you know, when we get these materials ahead of time, you know, we, I, I know we all review it and take some time to try to figure out what the reason is for this request to eliminate this condition. When I read the application, it just says to refrain from having to put a three-foot partition between my driveway and my neighbor's driveway. My question would be why? I know you explained it to me just now, but I don't really want to have to wait for this opportunity for someone to explain it to me. I'd rather actually understand the full scope of the request. So just on the basis of what was provided, plus this site plan, which as we've already seen is really not accurate, I just, I don't feel enough preparation's gone into this petition.
So we have some other comments?
Yep. So you mentioned that the neighbor's driveway directly above's the existing driveway.
Yes.
Was that driveway in existence in 1993 when the special permit was issued?
Excuse me. May I consult?
Sure. So it was, so at the time, the zoning board, that was a condition at the time the zoning board granted the special permit?
It was, yes.
Yeah. So, and they granted a special permit with a condition that says the petitioner shall provide a continuous maintained landscaping, excuse me, as shown on the plan. So it's been 26 years. So my question is, why wasn't it done? That's, you're asking us to amend a special permit that was done 26 years ago, and one of the conditions hasn't been met. So I'm asking you why we should consider that.
I can't really speak to, to that in that I obviously wasn't counsel to my client back in 1993. But I, I think that it has been, for whatever reason, you know, there's a certificate of occupancy issued, and it hasn't, wasn't brought to my client's attention as being a live violation, if you will, until more recently.
So are there any questions from anybody in the audience?
I'm looking at the photo, and there's clearly, sorry.
Just get up and introduce yourself, please.
Excuse me. I'm looking at the photo, and there's just total pavement between both these houses, which is pretty ugly, and we're trying to improve that in town. So, and I agree with the planning board, if this was supposed to be done 26 years ago, why are we now talking about it? But if anybody would like to see this photo, I'm happy to pass my phone around.
I'm sure we've all been there, but.
Just to know, I know you've seen the chat.
So, so are you, Lodi, are you making a recommendation or something?
I think they should live up to the agreement that was done 26 years ago. I don't know if the planning board can say if they put a three-foot in. It's a foot and a half on one side and a foot and a half on the other side, but that's not my expertise, but front yard parking is detestable.
So any other, any other comments?
I agree.
Do we have a?
Sure.
Do we have agreement? Do we have a motion here?
Sure. I move that the planning board deny the proposed amendment as submitted on the proposed plan due to insufficient findings to support the elimination of the buffer.
Is there a second?
Carrie, Carrie, just do it.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So. Thank you. Very clear. So I think we have to take 311 Arsenal next.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Bob Corning. I'm a principal at Stantec, joined tonight by Mark Blair, the Director of Athena Environment. We're here tonight to request a special permit to lease up to 500 parking spaces on the Arsenal on the Charles campus. The reason for this request is twofold. One is that there is a significant surplus of parking on the campus, and we'll go through that in detail in a moment. But then also Athena Health was also approached by some of their neighbors that is looking for additional parking for various reasons, which we'll also go through in a second. That's the basis of the, of the request. It is a by right use with a special permit from the planning board. If you can see, this is the existing campus as it exists today. It includes the, the new West Garage, which was completed last year, as well as all of the improved, site improvements associated with that project. The existing parking inventory consists of three main categories. The West Garage has 1,390 spaces. East Garage has 1,130 spaces, and there's 511 surface spots scattered around the campus. It should be noted that the top two floors of the West Garage are currently closed because they're not needed.
Say that again? Closed?
The top two floors of the West Garage are actually closed off because they're not required at this time. So in terms of parking demand, we, we looked at it in two different ways. The first was Vanoss Associates, who did the original traffic study for the project and did a parking demand study as part of the special permit that was received for the master planning project, updated their parking demand analysis on July 31st of 2019. And what this analysis does is it looks at the square footage of the campus by use, looks at metrics associated with traditional traffic engineering, and develops a model for what the parking demand is on campus. And through that modeling, based on the existing inventory of parking spaces, there's a surplus of 730 parking spaces at peak, and the peak demand is 2:00 PM in December. It's the peak time for parking on the campus. We were also asked to provide information on what the actual demand currently is on the campus. So as, as we've discussed in the planning board hearings previously, both garages are equipped with smart, smart parking technology, and what that does is it enables us to get real-time information in terms of what the occupancy is for each garage. This is, the image on the left is an example of what the readout is. It's all wireless, it's on your phone. The Athena environment team has access to this information all the time, so they have a real-time information in terms of what the inventory is. We looked at information for October 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. We discounted October 4th because that's a Friday, and the volumes were down significantly. So we are estimating an average of about 35% occupancy in the East Garage and about a 60% occupancy in the West Garage. It should be noted that you'll see in the red circle at the bottom of the image on the left, for some reason, the system isn't picking up the, the capacity on the sixth floor, so there's an extra 200 spaces that are actually not being accounted for in this calculation. So there's much more parking even than what the, these calculations are indicating.
In the West Garage?
In the West Garage, I'm sorry, thank you. In the West Garage, I'm sorry, thank you. So just, this is a summary table, so the existing inventory is three thousand thirty-one. The required number of parking spaces per the shared parking analysis is twenty-three-oh-one. So per the shared parking analysis, there's a surplus of seven hundred and thirty. The actual demand, based on actual accounts from the smart parking technology, is seventeen-hundred-and-forty-six. And I should note that we're not counting any surplus in the surface parking. There is, anecdotally, it's ninety percent filled most of the time, but for, for this purpose, we just assumed that it was, there was no occupants, no capacity in the surface. So the seventeen-hundred-and-forty-six is the actual demand, and that gives us about twelve-hundred-and-eighty-five spaces that are actually available on the campus at a peak time. So the potential leases, as I mentioned before, Athena Health was approached by three different neighbors in terms of looking for opportunities to utilize a short-term leased parking. St. Elizabeth's Hospital is in the, is, is going to be doing a new parking garage on their campus, and they're displacing a significant amount of parking spaces. They're requesting two-hundred-and-fifty spaces, they're requesting an eighteen-month term with a thirty-day termination clause. Tufts Health Plan is requesting a hundred spaces. They're currently in the process of doing repairs to their existing garage, and their request is for a six-month term with a thirty-day termination clause. And then there's no formal agreement or further agreement with Arsenal Yards, but they, there has been some preliminary discussions. Their concern is that once their garage opens and is being used by customers, that there will be insufficient parking available for contractors that are still working on the campus, and potentially it has a upset of a hundred spaces that they potentially could lease. So that's four hundred and fifty, and we're requesting five hundred to give us a little bit of flexibility. The shuttle bus, so the shuttle bus system that Athena is running is very robust. It gets more users and adds routes continuously. The shuttle bus stop for both pickup and drop-off is the area with the red star between Building three-eleven and Building thirty-nine. So regardless of whether the shuttle buses are coming in off of North Beacon Street or off of Arsenal Street, they loop around, use this location, and then circulate back out. The shuttle's currently serving Harvard Square, Back Bay Station, Brighton Center, Boston Landing, North Station, and South Station. Other participants in the TMA program, other, other users of Athena's shuttle include VHB and the Tufts, which is already using the shuttle system currently. It runs from seven to ten AM and four to seven PM. Users of the shuttle have, the schedules and the, the status of the shuttles are available in real-time through the Tripshot mobile app, and Athena would probably be adding shuttles to service to St. Elizabeth's users. Just a couple of quick notes on, on traffic. We haven't done an updated traffic study, we don't have real-time information in terms of traffic, but just a couple of notes. As the full build of the master plan has not been realized, the existing traffic volumes are significantly below what was projected, analyzed and mitigated with, associated with the master plan special permit. The, the master plan special permit assumed, the traffic generation and the mitigation associated with that assumed a full build of the entire campus. Not only is the campus not fully built out per the master plan, but occupancy has, has been down significantly as well. Traffic demand management program has been fully implemented, is being managed by onsite supervisor. We provided an updated status of the TDM program, the packages that were submitted with the application. Athena Health's been operating the TMA program for this part of town, as I mentioned previously, and currently VHB and Tufts is using that system. And I should note that some of the traffic from some of the potential leases, you know, that, that traffic is already using town roads, particularly Tufts in the Arsenal Yards project, but to certain extent, St. East as well. Should also note that the parking demand has been affected significantly downward because of the increased users of app rides, of Lyft and Uber. So that's the extent of our presentation. Mark and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
One thing you're not showing us is a plan of the buildings, or everybody understands how these cars that aren't parked, you know, from the site come and go. You're not showing us any plan of any of the building and how people would come and go from the street. In other words, they're not all coming in through the campus, they're coming in another way probably.
The users?
The users.
The, the potential leased, the leased spaces?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we don't know where they'll be coming from. They'll either be coming in, well, like all the other users of the campus, either off of North Beacon Street or off, or off of Arsenal Street.
So, so, looking at that diagram, how many places can you actually enter and/or leave the garage?
So the, the school street, what we're calling School Street, which is the North Beacon Street entrance, is two-way. So there's an entrance and an exit. Kingsbury Avenue is one-way in off of Arsenal Street, and then Tau Kedav is, is two-way at Arsenal Street. The, the West Garage also has the, the new signalized intersection at Woolley Ave. So those are, those are the entrances and exits all the existing users of the campus use currently, and depending on where the leased vehicles will be coming from, they'll use those same entrances and exits.
So, have we a staff report on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you've already heard, the applicant is requesting a special permit in Section 5.12 AODD, the Arsenal Overlay Development District, and Table 501 Cable Use Regulations to add, again, the parking for gain, adding parking spaces to lease out to other entities. The Arsenal on Charles is approximately a twenty-nine-point-five-acre commercial campus that the applicant described. On campus, there's three thousand and thirty-one parking spaces, primarily in the two garages, as well as some surface spaces. The nature of the request is to allow a temporary option to lease up to five hundred spaces to off-site uses, and the request was to allow this for two years and to renew it in one-year increments. The campus master plan special permit with site plan review was approved in July of two thousand and sixteen. That allowed for additional development on campus. As you know, the campus presence from Athena Health has been reduced. Also, some of the other tenants on campus has been reduced, and therefore, as well as the additional development associated with that master plan has not come to fruition, and so there are excess parking spaces that exist on the campus today. In terms of public comment, we've, did receive a number of letters in opposition to the application. Kathy Santoyan, Marcia Ciro, Leslie Evans, and Nina Baskin have all submitted letters in opposition. I also received an email this, late this afternoon from Nancy Kay. I certainly don't want to, because I know some of them are here tonight, I don't want to mischaracterize any of their letters, but they are all in opposition, raised concerns about the performance of the applicant in terms of meeting conditions, and also expressed concerns about some of the impacts of the, the campus and traffic and parking in the area. A, a number of other issues. Again, I'm not trying to summarize all their concerns to you, as I'm sure they will in their testimony, and you've gotten their written comments before you as well. In terms of the criteria to grant a special permit, there's four conditions or, or criteria. The first one is, does specific site, is it appropriate location for such use structure or condition? Staff felt that this was met. Obviously, it's an existing garage that's there, or garages, I should say, that are there, that have been operating. The proposed buildings that, to some extent, the garages were intended to support have not been constructed. So the requirement in terms of parking spaces is, in terms of what the occupancy of the campus is today is much less, and therefore, there again is existing excess spaces. You know, the utilization of those spaces does provide some opportunity to reduce the impact of, or, or the creation of spaces elsewhere. In this case, I think the applicant is responding to particularly the requests of some other users that are looking for a temporary solution to their, their issues. Both in the case of St. Elizabeth's and Tufts, they are doing construction projects that impact their parking, and in the case of Arsenal Yards, obviously, that project is under construction and looking for an opportunity while, when they begin to get occupancy. The second condition has to do with the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Again, the underutilized site and unbuilt campus buildings reduces the traffic volumes that were assumed as part of the traffic study analysis when the site plan special permit was approved. They updated parking demand analysis submitted by Vaness and Associates, projected peak parking demand for all users, and that was, again, substantially less than two thousand three hundred and one as opposed to the supply, which is three thousand and thirty-one. So, again, excess, significant excess parking available. Leasing of those five, five hundred spaces would certainly increase the traffic over the existing situation on the site today, but again, the original traffic impacts study that was done for the campus assumed not only additional employees, but also additional, the development of additional space, both retail and office on the site, which doesn't exist today. Therefore, staff suggested, prior to finalizing any lease agreements with any off-site users, parking management plan associated with that would be reviewed and approved by the department, which include hours, how the shuttle program would work, what exactly portions of the garage would be leased to who, and, and so on and so forth. The third one is there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard vehicles or pedestrians. Again, the garage was designed and constructed, both garages are designed and constructed to operate and function as they currently are, so staff found that there was no additional nuisance to fully utilizing the facilities. Four adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. Again, the garages were both constructed according to all the building codes and requirements. There's no suggesting, you know, for additional signage or anything of that nature, and they currently are operating well below their anticipated capacity as well as would be even with the leasing of spaces. We do recognize that that could change over time. There's certainly nothing that would prevent the applicant from occupying a space that does exist on campus, so we did note that, again, as, assuming this was approved, as it moved forward, that, that the applicant submit plans associated with the leasing of the spaces, the operation of the shuttles, and that that would be reviewed annually by staff through the petitioner. Based on that, the staff recommended granting of the special permit with following conditions. The particular conditions have to do with, you know, other than the standard ones, had to do with the lease, that prior to finalizing a lease arrangement with off-site users, parking management plan for the use would be submitted, including the hours of the use, shuttle program, how that would operate, and what portions of the facilities would have, have parking for which entities, for approval by the town. Permit expiration, that the special permit for the use of the five hundred spaces would expire one year from the date of issuance unless a request for an extension was received and approved by the town. Further, any extension will only be allowed for up to a year, and the extension of the permit requires a written report of the site conditions, showing that the parking remains adequate for the campus uses, and a requested parking for gain of up to five hundred spaces. That report would also include peak hour, peak period parking usage, as well as summary of all parking leases, information including lessee, the number of spaces, duration of lease, and again, a written request for that approval, and would, that would be at the discretion of the department. And then finally, circulation and off-site parking, that, again, consistent with the master plan special permit, that there would be no off-site parking of vehicles associated with any of the uses on the campus or the parking for gain use. That concludes staff report.
So the application is for, as submitted, is to allow additional use for two years?
Correct.
With an opportunity to renew it in one-year increments? And the staff recommendation is that it be for one year?
Correct.
And be reviewed again?
Correct.
So with that in mind, do we have some?
May I start, sir?
Board questions? Comments?
This, this is a difficult one for me. I think you and I were the only ones on the board at the time that we went through.
Gary, could you move the mic a little bit closer?
I, I think perhaps that, that the chairman and I were the only ones on this board when we went through the process of community meetings and all the meetings with Mark's, Mark and his predecessors over a long period of time. And it, it's also difficult because we understand the company has some struggling that's going on, which is part of the reason for the surplus of spaces. Nonetheless, it was a painful process in my recollection, probably for everybody, certainly the community, and maybe for some of us who ultimately had to vote on it, vote for it, and sort of place our thumbprint on the, on the record for it. I think we felt at the time, there was clear opposition by the community. There was a number of reasons for that, historical and current ongoing at the time. And there were a lot of negotiations, you might say, over design, and I'm, I'm saying some of this because some of you weren't here, and others may, may like to refresh their memories or at least see where mine stands. Anyway, it was a difficult process, and a lot of things were promised on both sides. Athena promised to do certain things, which they did very well, like the garden on the west, sorry, the south side. That development, I think, is, in my view, I, I don't know how the community feels, but it seems like it was done as, as committed and seems rather successful from, from my perspective. Other things were not done, that, for whatever reasons, the, the community building on the north side of the garage that would screen the bulk of that building and really pull off the design in a nicer way, never happened. And I understand business reasons do that, but still, the community approved the project with the assumption that, that a number of things would take place, things that were tacitly or explicitly promised and, and have not gone forward. The employment growth, of course, is the bottom line for a lot of this, and it's hard not to be sympathetic with that, but nonetheless, the community sits at a point in time when they can benefit a little bit, with a little bit of a rest from the growth that would have put a lot of cars on the street for parking and for traffic, as, as we all know. And instead, the proponent, or the applicant, rather, is looking to, to, to sort of try to make some benefit out of the expense that they've put into the garage, and that's totally understandable, but at the community's expense, in my view. It's not their fault that the business of the, of Athena has not gone as rapidly upward as they would have liked, but it would be a harm to them, or the absence of a benefit, if this brief respite, hopefully it's brief for Athena's sake, couldn't also benefit them by calming the traffic demand and so forth. So I think there was a lot of, there was, there was just a lot of emotion and frustration all around, difficulty for the client dealing with the community, difficult for the community dealing with the impact on their lives, which I would say was the more important of the two, but others may differ, and a lot of commitments that have had to be broken for primarily economic reasons, I imagine. So the bottom line is, is that all of these things add up to the non-fulfillment of sort of compensating factors in the design. The building on the front, that would have made it a palatable, palatable design from the Arsenal Street side, and the retail space that hasn't gone forward on Kingsbury, which would have been a community benefit as the existing retail space is. which would have been a community benefit as the existing retail space is. And yet, the community is now facing the possibility that all of the traffic that would have been present had the development proceeded as anticipated comes to fruition with none of those other things. So I have a hard time supporting it from that perspective. It's as though the community gave, the town gave, and conditions in the business community didn't permit Athena to give, let's say, or to carry out what they had hoped to commit to. So I just think it would be unfair to impose all of those things on the community. And I have a hard time with it, so that's my feeling. I'll listen to others' views as we go through the night, but it's a tough one for me.
Yeah, Jason, who's next?
Do you want to go ahead?
No, I really don't at this point.
Thanks. So I have to say, when I first looked at this, I found this request frankly infuriating. Because some of you may disagree with my characterization of it. And again, like Gary said, I wasn't on the board, three of us weren't on the board at the time. We didn't go through in real time what you all did, as well as the neighbors. But the way it looks to me, this garage was essentially overbuilt by two stories. And it caused a lot of consternation in the process. I've read a lot about the lighting situation, some of the other things that have happened that have really, you know, led to a lot of frustration by the by the neighborhood. And now essentially, we're being asked to kind of help bail you out of this mistake. And, you know, again, I will I will agree that these were economic conditions that could not have been anticipated. But regardless of that, we're still looking at this garage that could have been two stories lower. And, you know, I don't know, maybe these buildings will be built at some point and the growth will take place. We really have no way of knowing. The thing that that I'm really grappling with also, though, is, so we have this letter from Athena Health with all of the, all of the conditions in the special permit. And I see a lot of them are green, they're indicated as complete. I have a hard time reconciling this with what I'm seeing in the letters from the neighbors. So I'm kind of hoping that somebody can walk us through and really figure out, like, what, which of these conditions have been met, which of them are in process, which ones haven't even started. And I guess I would say I can't support the request until I feel that at least all of the conditions that are achievable have been completed. And some commitment to, like, I see some of them about, for instance, you know, the lack of certain technology for the MBTA. Well, fine, I understand that if they don't make this kind of equipment or they're moving to a different fare collection system, then that should be stricken from the list of of conditions. But other than that, I'm seeing a lot of daylight between what's in the letter and what I'm seeing from from abutters and the members of the public. I'd just like to get to the bottom of that. I don't think we can grant this petition until we know that they've at least done everything that they can or that we've asked them to do.
Okay, I support what my colleagues have said. I'm going to question a little bit the presumption that the garage was overbuilt because it was built based on projections that just haven't come to fruition. And I don't think anybody in the neighborhood was in favor of less parking than was projected because there was a great concern that I recall about people parking on the street, Athena people parking in the neighborhood. So I, at this point, I'm surprised to hear everybody saying, oh, well, they overbuilt it because they meant to make money off of it. That's not my memory. My memory is that people were very concerned that employees were going to find it easier to park in the street. And we did a parking counter, they did a parking count, we reviewed it, and it was appropriate to build the the garage to that size. If it was actually overbuilt, it's to nobody's disadvantage, except for the people who paid for it. I am, I've read the letters and and I've also heard and read things that don't support all of the claims. So I'm interested in hearing what the community has to say and the town responses and Athena responses because there are certain things that I'm reading from various people that don't match my perception of what's going on. So I'm ready to listen.
I'll I'll start out by saying I am a direct abutter to Athena Health. Talcott Avenue was my backyard, so just for the record, so everybody understands that. And I guess my questions, I kind of had a similar first reaction. I got the first, I got the letter, you know, saying that because of an abutter that this is happening. And I was like, really? And but I said, my job is to review what I, what's in front of me. So I have more questions about that, and I'm interested to hear what the public has to say. You know, one of the questions I had in my mind as I I read through the letter that Athena wrote and the staff report was, you know, when I was sitting out there and a lot of the discussions that happened during the master plan and the original permit for this, there was a lot of discussion about the parking issues that were happening in the neighborhoods on North Beacon Street and around there. And what I'd like to hear from Athena and from the neighborhood as well is, have those, are those parking issues ongoing? Are there still issues with those in the neighborhood in there? The other thing is you're talking about splitting. If this is approved, you would split between the two. Is there a way that if you're leasing spaces, they could be designated into one of the garages and Athena employees are directed to park somewhere else to limit circulation of traffic? And the other thing is just, you know, in terms of meeting, just you all were just listening to the last case, you know, you always have permit conditions. And I would just ask Steve, in terms of the July 2016 master plan permit and the permit for the garage, have the conditions been met that should have been met up to the point where we are today? You know, granted, the whole master plan has not been built out and there's certain pieces of that that were, you know, conditions that were going to the other buildings or whatever. So that that was one question I had for staff.
Yeah, and in response to that, Mr. Chairman, I would say, no, they haven't all been met. There are some some issues that we're still working on that are associated with the mitigation that have been tied up in the iQub conversation and the hope and expectation that through the iQub, those things would be addressed and then some. Unfortunately, you know, we're not there yet. I don't think that that's, you know, I know there's certainly a lot of consternation expressed in in some of the neighbor resident letters about the lack of performance on some of those things. And I can assure you that it is not for lack of trying on the the town's part or Athena's part to try and bring iQub to fruition, but but that hasn't happened. As a result, some of those things are still pending. They haven't been ignored or forgotten or or or, you know, won't be addressed. There's certainly a commitment, I think, both on Athena's part and the town's part to make sure that all those mitigation obligations are addressed. But there's still that open question as to whether that's going to be done as part of a much broader project as done with iQub or not. So that's one thing. Second thing, obviously, the building on Arsenal Street frontage has not been constructed. That is certainly concern that that I would share. That was part of the site plan approval for the garage, had that that building associated with it. You know, I think from my perspective and is yours as well, that 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 was not, you know, the 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 package that we approved when we approved the parking garage. It wasn't a, you know, blank concrete wall of a garage facing Arsenal Street. So that's certainly an outstanding issue. So, you know, at least in my mind, I think those are the two primary things that have not been addressed to date.
So most of it sounds like process, except for the building that has been holding that up. I guess the last thing, question I have too, is just that I pose is, there was reports in the news last week about Athena looking to sell the campus. And how, if if this were granted, how does that affect this approval? Is it transferable to a new owner? Does a new owner have to come back to the planning board or to staff with regard to that as well? So that's one other thing I want to get out there as for part of this discussion.
Sure. So obviously, there's a lot of interest and discussion about the potential sale of the property. Any site plan approval, any special permit approval, any building permit approval, you know, those are all transferable. So that would, a new owner would have those same obligations that the applicant has in terms of those conditions and those requirements and and so that would all be transferable. That I don't think changes anything. I do think that it's certainly conceivable that if the property does sell and there's a new owner, we'll be back here having another conversation, particularly about, you know, the the additional buildings that were conceived in the master plan and approved in the master plan, you know, whether a new owner would would want to build those exact buildings or do something different. I expect we'll be back here talking about that and amendments to the special permit, assuming it does sell.
So one of the things I do remember about this early on, which I thought was very favorable, was the notion of the garage, whatever, whichever garage. The idea was to get cars off the ground and off the site. And that was a major, that was a goal that was very clearly stated at the beginning and an honorable one, I think. So that's partially why the size of the garage. So we would entertain, I think, comments from, from the audience, I was going to say.
Hello, this is Marcia Ciro from 13 Bay Street. I can answer your questions about the onsite of the neighborhood parking as you were asking them. Those worries were mostly during construction. We were worried that Athena didn't have enough spaces for for their people while there wasn't a garage. There isn't really that problem now, so that's really right now. I'm the author of this treatise here that I sent you, and I'm not going to, don't worry, I'm not going to read the whole thing. But I do have some questions for you. Does this, does this garage have an occupancy permit?
It has a temporary occupancy permit.
So it doesn't have a permanent one?
No.
So how does that affect their doing this sort of thing? Or how does it affect even the fact that they're using this garage?
Well, so the temporary occupancy permit allows them to use it. You know, there are certain things that haven't been met and the reason it's still temporary. How does that affect this? You know, I'm not sure it necessarily does one way or the other.
How long can a garage go in a temporary occupancy permit?
It could go until we either revoke that temporary occupancy permit or issue a permanent one. So far, I think they've been on six-month increments.
And what are the conditions for a permanent occupancy permit?
That they comply with all the conditions of the permit.
So they haven't done that?
I already said that.
So they don't deserve an full, actual occupancy permit?
Right.
Okay, well, that's that's interesting. As you talked about, Athena has not lived up to its promises to provide a community space on the north side. We heard a little bit about iQub letdowns because we haven't had any of that. There was also 6.4 million in road mitigation that was supposed to be done. And I wondered if any of you have seen an accounting of that money? Have you?
We haven't. We wouldn't.
We wouldn't.
You wouldn't?
That's that's part of the mitigation I was referring to earlier.
Is there an accounting of that money and how it's been spent?
It's not an accounting of money. It is, there's a off-site road mitigation that's required. Again, we've been talking about that as part of iQub. It's either will be accomplished as part of a larger project or be accomplished as individual projects. So we're still not there yet.
I see. So, well, I guess you haven't, you don't have an accounting of what's been spent and what hasn't. So that money, you don't actually know.
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean.
Oh, good, then you could tell us what's been spent.
Sure, I could tell you which parts of the mitigation have been done and which haven't.
Okay, why don't you? Well, actually, let me, maybe you could do that later. Or maybe you could tell the planning board because they might want to know. We've had a hard time in our neighborhood with the lighting of the garage. We were promised that we could see the lighting plan before it was done. As I understand it, you didn't, the planning board didn't even see it. It was approved behind back doors.
We saw the lighting plan.
I saw the lighting plan, but you also know that we were promised perimeter and baller lighting at the top of the garage and that our zone zoning is, has a problem with that, which was never told to us. And so there were a lot of promises made and we're living with that now, which is really awful. We've asked them to shut the lights off, they've shielded them. It's not really very good because the lights are above us, so it doesn't really matter. They have been nice enough to shut the lights off, but I imagine if the garage is full, that those lights will have to go back on. There's a west, an emergency road along the west side that we did not want. And we were forced to take that, but we had promises that there would be very clear markings on that road, that nobody else can use it. Well, there are people who come through, probably by mistake mostly. And in January, Kathy Santoyan wrote to Mark Blair to ask about if something could be done with signage or whatever. Nothing has been done. The TMA situation that is, that we're supposed to have in Watertown, yeah, they're doing some of it, but that's pretty much a failure. They, during the construction, Athena employees were allowed to park along North Beacon Street because they, that went on for two years because they didn't provide enough off-site parking as they said they would. So that condition was not met. And so the people who were parked down the end near the bridge didn't want to walk too far, so they pretty much destroyed the fence there. You know, I understand the town doesn't seem to be able to get anything from developers. We've lost the, you know, getting the the Arsenal Park fixed. We don't, we don't get anything. So I guess, you know, it's maybe too much to ask them to fix the fence that their employees destroyed. It looks pretty awful and it doesn't really look very well for Watertown. We heard a lot of talk about traffic and the fact that there's less traffic than they expected. Well, I can tell you right now, there is not less traffic. That maybe there's less traffic from Athena employees, but believe me, the rest of the world has been glad to fill it in. And we are seeing incredible amounts of rush hour traffic on our streets. Charles River Road is a speedway. We are seeing a lot of traffic. So they may do traffic studies for their own stuff, but nobody in the town wants to do a traffic study about what's actually happening there. And as I remember, the improvements that they made to the School Street and North Beacon Street, that intersection at the time in 2016 was rated a D. Their improvements only brought it up to a C. So I would love to hear what that is now. Also, in January and the master plan approval, let's see, Jeff Dirk from Van Ass had said that there would be all these traffic counts, that they would, all this stuff. And all that data would be submitted in an annual report to the planning department. Has that ever been done?
It hasn't been done because they haven't gotten the final occupancy of the garage.
Oh, really? And that's the only criteria for doing it?
Well, that's certainly the position that the applicant's taken.
Yeah, so the town wouldn't want to know what's going on or anything like that.
We've requested that information and the applicant has said, when they get final occupancy of the garage, that they would submit that.
We've been asking for this stuff for years and we haven't gotten any numbers out of them. So the other thing that they were supposed to do was, they had committed to a 20% reduction in SOV, single occupancy vehicle trips, by Athena employees and 15% by all other users. Their goals was for 40% of the trips on campus to be made by non-SOV vehicles. I can't imagine that renting these out right now to these other people is, they're not all going to be SOV. I don't think they're going to carpool here. So I, does anybody know how this would affect those goals? No? Okay, so it doesn't sound like you have a lot of information in order to vote on this. And you have some information about things that haven't been done, but you really don't know, nobody's really gone back to the conditions of the master plan, the things that they promised, and really like itemize those and figure out what's been going on here. So there's been very little oversight, a lot of backroom deals. And I think this is just a bad idea until they can give us what they promised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First of all, I want to agree with Janet where I don't feel that this was overbuilt. Because if they did everything that they were going to do on that campus, this probably might not even have been enough parking if they were successful retail to go along with everything else they were going to do. I have some concerns tonight. As was made clear earlier, this place is for sale. The original owner, before the hedge fund got involved, had all kinds of visions. That's what got the whole community upset. And Gary mentioned how this was agonizing for everybody in the community and everybody on the board. It was. It truly was. So, the hedge fund is now selling this property. It's, people are leaving. Bright Horizons is leaving. So if all, if they lease these spaces, and then the new owner wants to rent all of these spaces, where are those people going to park? In the neighborhood. I have a problem with that. It was said tonight that some of these people from St. Elizabeth and Tufts might already come here. Yeah, they might. But I don't know too many people that are going to St. Elizabeth that are coming through Watertown. There might be a few. But we're adding those people back into the traffic. So again, I think this is fraught with some very major concerns, because this is a site that could be developed very quickly and rented very quickly when a new owner takes over. So how can we be leasing spaces, committed to leasing spaces, and then not have spaces for people that we rent to? I think you should consider very carefully allowing this to move forward. Thank you.
She had her hand up. You get your turn, Danny.
Thank you. Angie Cronellis, 55 Kenan Street, East End Town Councilor. To also piggyback on Council President Sideris's comments, this is an unknown entity. We have spent countless hours discussing this particular parcel, as was alluded to by board members. Countless hours that totaled days and weeks. And here we are, we're at the mercy of the media, and we never know what shoe's going to drop when it comes to Athena Health. First, we hear that the CEO might be leaving, then the CEO is leaving, then the business has been sold, now the property's for sale. So is this for the benefit of the new property owner? We have no clue. Sure, we want to be good neighbors, especially to Tufts, another East End entity that is looking for additional parking spaces for a short term. And the petitioner here is looking for two years, the staff recommendation is for one year. We don't know what's going to happen in the next 24 hours with this particular parcel, and that's very concerning for us. As the council president alluded to, this could very easily be built up overnight, rented out, and Athena Health has indicated that they plan on staying at this parcel as a tenant. I've lost faith. We just don't know what's going to be materializing. So, the neighbors will certainly be talking about the specifics of how they deal with Athena Health in their own backyard. But I have to look at it realistically, from how the community's going to deal with it. And there are just so many unknown factors as to the future of Athena Health and its relationship to the city known as the town of Watertown. Thank you.
Anthony Donato, 42 Arden Road. I'm one of the at-large councillors here in Watertown. I too have some serious concerns with this proposal. I would agree with both Janet and the council president. I think when this garage was built, it was built for the anticipated needs of the master plan for Athena Health. But that garage was to deal with onsite development. And Athena has made a conscious decision not to proceed with that development onsite. So, I think it's disingenuous to say that this isn't more detrimental to the neighborhood, because Athena is relying on the fact that this development has not proceeded, therefore there's less cars onsite. And if we add these 500 parking spaces, well, in the grand scheme of things, it's no big deal. I would find that argument more convincing if all of the development had proceeded and they found that there was this additional room to lease out the 500 spaces. But where they made the decision not to proceed, it just doesn't seem right to me that they can now try to profit from the fact that there's all this additional space available based solely on a decision that they made. Similar to other concerns, the property is for sale. We have no idea what's going to happen. And to say, I would have actually liked some of these people who are looking to lease the spaces to be here tonight, to say why they need these spaces and where else they've looked, and if they have other alternatives. Because that's off-site traffic that's coming to the parking garage, then you're going to have to have additional shuttles to transport that traffic to and from Athena Health. So, I have some serious concerns, and I think really this is a situation of Athena's own making, and I don't think they should be able to benefit from it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add something in, tagging on to Councilor Donato's comment?
Sorry? Say that again?
I just want to add something, based on what he said. Going back to the original comment about overbuilt, there's different ways of interpreting that. When I said overbuilt, I'm saying in the context of if there are 730 spaces that are now available, regardless of the reasons for that, or what, whether the count was justified at the time, I consider it to be overbuilt. And until we know that all the rest of the buildings are going to be built and that demand will be there, to me, until that day, it is overbuilt. So, that's my interpretation of that comment. People can choose to agree or disagree with it, but empirically, right now, there is way more parking in this facility than there needs to be.
Alodia Thomas, 67 Marion Road. I am not in a butter, but I have been involved with this project since 2014, when a butters asked me to come to a meeting to kind of address some of the issues that were going on with the garage, given the work that I had done at Victory Field. These people have worked tremendously hard. We had meetings at various residents' homes. President Sideris was there. People from Athena were there. We talked about garages. We brought in tons of ideas. We talked about gardens. We did everything. Lots of promises were made. Those promises about the roof lighting were made, that there would be perimeter lighting, no overhead lighting, bollard lighting, so this would not be glaring at people. And that wasn't fulfilled. And whether it's a flaw in our zoning, which I keep finding them, as you know, whether it's biotech or noise, I think we have to examine our lighting issue here. But I'd like to take a further step back. This whole issue with iQub started in 2015, where we were going to get this $25 million that was going to provide all these assets for our community. In 2017, it was passed by the town. Athena had hit their numbers. So where's the money? Is this a problem at the state? I buttonholed our town manager the other day at the fair and the square, and I asked him and Senator Brownsberger about this issue. Because two summers ago, I'd called the State House saying, if they haven't hit their numbers, if they hit half their numbers, do we get 12.5 million? Because Watertown really needs that money, when you look at our roadways and what is going on in this community. And people said, why are you asking the question? I said, we are under an onslaught of development. The town keeps getting, taking the pounding. The developers keep developing, and there's no quid pro quo. Well, we still don't have that answer. And then our town manager said he had heard from A and F at the State House that sometimes it can take seven years for the town to get that iQub money. Well, how many years have we been around already? This was going through, this is an article in 2017. We still don't have the money. The company was sold for $5.7 billion. $5.7 billion. They did not leave us with a gift, saying, thank you, you, we put up with us while we're going through all this. We want to leave Watertown with a gift. And they failed to complete that garage. It's ugly when you go down Arsenal Street. I'm sorry. They have a temporary occupancy certificate, because they did not do the job. And that has happened again and again and again. I want to know, how much are you going to rent these spaces out for? How much money do you expect to make on this little deal? Because now you're up for sale again, and we are going to take it on the chin. If you want to donate all that money to a fund for Watertown, for community improvements, I'm willing to listen. If you're willing to open that garage up for the residents that live in town in the winter, I'm willing to listen. And if you're willing to let people use your shuttle buses, which was alluded to years ago, that it'd be a quid pro quo, I'm willing to listen. But right now, I am asking you just to say no. Really, enough of what has been going on in this town and what the residents have had to put up with.
In the back.
Let me find my notes. Hi, my name is Sarah Ryan. I'm at 43 Paul Street, in the neighborhood right near Athena. So, looking at my different notes on this, my first comment is, the board has to deny this permit, please, for all the reasons that are being discussed here. This really has to be reconsidered. You have to really understand the impact of what this would be for, for our neighborhood, for our community. First, frustrated is putting it mildly. There's a lot of emotion here. I found a really thick folder in a room I was clearing out of all the paperwork from all of our meetings. We have logged, we in the community, have logged so many hours and so much work in this whole process dealing with Athena. And, you know, as was pointed out, yes, the garden over on one corner is, is nice. I've gone over there, I've walked over there. So there are glimmers. There are aspects of this that have turned out okay. There has been a lot of hell involved in this. The whole construction process was pretty miserable. Looking back to when this all started, our quality of life has been negatively impacted by so many aspects of what has gone on at Athena. This is, it's really huge. This is significant. And to your second point as to how this permit impacts, so what was it? Use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. We have a problem. We already have a serious problem with what has gone on in Athena. It's already negative. So, this proposal, this single proposal to add, I mean, granted, we understand that the original build-out was, you know, for a different Athena that was this wild, you know, this wonderful dream that was going to happen, and the company's not done well. And on that point, we all appreciate that this is about Corporation X, who's going to buy the space, not about Athena anymore. Athena's kind of gone. They may be a tenant. Some corporation is going to come in and is going to buy this. We have to be realistic. There is space there, there's a permit, there's going to be buildings. So, you know, there's going to be a future in which this, this property is probably going to be deused a whole lot more. But we, we have to understand right now what the impacts have been on the neighborhood with Athena, the way they are. And so, there's a lot of very negative impacts. The traffic is huge. And so, it's adorable to hear that, oh, our predicted use from our campus is less than it used to be. But as anybody who has been anywhere near this corner of town knows, traffic is many, many times worse now than it was a year ago. I mean, astronomically visibly worse. My friends are talking about, how do I get to work and which, you know, different commuting route do I take? And it's really, it's very serious. This actually gets to something that a lot of us talked about a lot in all of these meetings over all of these years. There are many developments in Watertown. You have to look at this with the big picture. So, you know, we can't necessarily point every finger at Athena for the cars that block up down to my street and make it, you know, make, make my life kind of hellish. But it's, it's part of a bigger picture of a lot of things that are changing. And so, the idea of allowing any more cars to come anywhere near this site right now is, is just really untenable. It's really pretty miserable to think about that. The lighting is a really big issue. It's a really, really big issue. And this is like, this is like major negative quality of life for the neighborhood. It doesn't shine directly into the lights of my house, but it's, everywhere you go, there's these huge glaring lights shining over. We happen to live right next to a really pretty part of the river. You can see over there. I'm sure most of you have been over to that section. It's really nice to go out and walk there in the evenings. And then to have this huge corporate ugly blue lighting shining in your face all the time, it's got to be solved. And that was, again, we logged so many hours talking about perimeter lighting, low lighting, non-invasive lighting. We sat there looking from Kathy's living room at where the site would be and said, well, let's see, when a car comes down this ramp, where are the headlights going to go? How much are they going to shine into these houses? So, we need a plan. We need somebody to do something to improve what's there. But, you know, the current existing situation with those pole lights on the top of the garage is unacceptable. I mean, it's just, it's miserable for the neighborhood. So I think that, you know, this board, somehow among us, we've got to look at zoning, we've got to look through this board, we've got to figure out what to do to improve that lighting aspect. One fun thing I saw way back in our early notes, when we had these lovely dreams coming in from Athena about all these wonderful things that are going to happen, was a green roof. Like, let's go back to a green roof. Let's just take the top floor, turn it into a green roof. Stick out some solar panels. Don't have parking up there. Get the stupid lights off the top, turn it into a green roof. Win-win. Everybody's happy. So that's one of the many situations. Let me see what else I had notes on. That's a lot of what I was going to talk about. There's a lot of frustration, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that we've got to do better with this property. It's going to be the next tenant. It's not really about Athena. iQub is a dream that's never ever going to happen. I don't think we're, I mean, maybe we can see some of that money. I don't know where we're going to find it from. But we've got to do a lot better, and we've got to, we've got to face the things that are really causing problems right now from this site. And the lights is major one.
Wait a minute, Tony's not spoken first.
Hi, my name is Tony Palomba. I live at 14 Bates Road, and I'm on the town councilors and at-large councilor. I actually came tonight to ask for a condition of if you were to approve the permit. And I, I've been approached by a number of constituents about how difficult it is to have parking when the winter parking ban is in place, that many of these residents don't have a, a place to put their car because of the size of their driveway and so forth. And the town hasn't enlarged on its available space for folks who have to deal with the parking ban. And it came to me as a, an idea, well, why couldn't we get, as a condition of approval, Athena to do 50 spots for the area residents who could use their space during the parking ban? And there's a number of people, particularly on some of the streets right around Athena, going into Watertown, that would, could have, I mean, going into, up the School Street, that would have benefited from that. But now I hear from, what I hear is, is that there are some conditions that were not met that directly relate to the garage. I'm not sure I agree with everything that was said by the community, but I do agree that those conditions regarding the West Garage have not been met. And unfortunately, it seems to me that they need to be met before you do anything to approve this petition. So I would hope that, that you would take seriously the need to, to have the conditions, particularly regarding to the frontage of the, on, on Arsenal Street, met before you grant the petition. Thank you.
Alodia was...
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, Mr. Chairman. I just want to read a letter. This was sent to Mr. Magoon on September 10th, and this is about their shuttle service. And it says, Athena has entered into a new partnership with Tufts Health Plan and VHB to allow additional commuters from this, these sites to use Athena shuttles. So they already have a deal. They didn't come here to ask your permission. They've already made a deal. I think that's rather rude to this town. That's how I read this. The other thing that I read in this letter, again, the additional parking, the low at 7:30 of having those spaces is around Christmas time, so I guess everybody's in for the holiday party. It jumps up to over 1,000 free spaces in late, late January, so how flexible is this going to be? But the real thing that sticks in my craw is that north side of the garage, which is an ugly thing with wires sticking out, whatever they are. They just have not lived up to what they said they were going to do. So the idea that they have a temporary occupancy permit, and we're going to enter into a deal with them, when we know the CEO lives in Texas, and tomorrow he could decide, we'll leave a light staff here and we're moving on, is just ridiculous.
Yes. Oh, here, we have it, we have another voice here that hasn't spoken yet. We can see we're at the Patriots game right now, I think. We can see we're at the Patriots game right now, I think.
Go Pats. Jimmy Mello, one hundred Warren Street. I'm a former member of the planning board way back years ago, long before any of you people were on. But anyway, listening to the neighbors and knowing what Athena has done, their commitments there, they have not lived through to this down, to the taxpayers or the residents, especially their neighbors. This is a no-brainer. This is a denial. They just need to live up what they said they were going to do for us. That's it. Thank you.
I just want to add to what Tony said about people needing spaces during the winter. We talked to Athena a lot about being able to use their shuttles. And we now, you cannot use their shuttle. I mean, they said they were working on it, that sure, we'll allow you to use the shuttle. Well, we cannot use the shuttle. You have to have an ID in order to do that. So, when they talk about being nicely, nicely to their neighbors, they certainly don't mean us. So, I don't understand why that isn't allowed. I don't understand why if they could, they have five hundred extra spaces, offer them to the town, offer them to town residents to take their shuttles before anyone else. Thank you very much.
Could we hear from Athena about that statement about the shuttle? I'm really curious about how that does work and whether Watertown residents are allowed to use the shuttle or not, because that's come up in a lot of the letters.
Well, you can do, sure.
Mark Blair, Athena Health. The shuttle program is part of the TMA that we signed up for when we were granted the master plan special permit. There is no, the TMA does not have a program that allows residents to ride the shuttle program. So, I'm not sure where that's coming from. Our shuttle bus program was originally set up for the employees. We have, we have somebody with a TMA, working with Steve and Gideon. We've been working on the TMA, trying to come up with a way to help the other businesses on the corridor, and that's what the Tufts and VHB program is about. So, I'm not aware of any residential, I know there's talk of a residential program that we were looking at with the town, but that's not in place now.
I am really sorry. This really pisses me off.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Hold on.
I need to say something.
We've heard you twice now.
I'm sorry. I need to, and I need to rebut that.
Quick, please.
Okay. So, in nineteen sixteen, Diane Crowley from Parker Street stood up and said, I had heard that with the shuttle, Athena was going to allow the public to also ride the shuttle. I don't know when that is going to happen and I'd like to know what the price would be. Richard McGraw answered, part of our shuttle system is to optimize the total system. He tends to put his foot in his mouth a lot. And within the TMA, we would explore the town, how we would optimize our shuttle system, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can actually begin to explore how we would begin to provide services to the residents. We're not there yet. Probably heard a lot of conversations, a lot more to come. Unquote.
Which is consistent with where we are. We envisioned a shuttle service through the TMA that eventually provides service to the public. That is not without implications and it's not without a lot of difficult decisions that need to be made. And the TMA is still working on that. And we, again, have every intention to have shuttle service that will be open to the public. At this point, it's been expanded to include Tufts and VHB. We're still working on agreements for several other developments in the corridor. Again, and we'll hope to expand that to the public as well, but we're not there yet.
So, assuming there is one last speaker.
My name is David Martin. I live in two twenty-nine North Beacon Street. And I, the picture taken, the second picture in this photograph, I took that one right from my, my back porch, because that's not a rigged picture either. That's done with a, with a good Kodak, I mean, a good Nikon camera. But that was when the lights have been off since and that's good. Well, one question I do have is according to, I reviewed all the notes we had and all the, you know, back and forth during the whole presentations from Athena Health, if I want to understand the capacity of the, the West Garage was set at eighteen fifty cars. What happened to the other four hundred and sixty? Because I see right here thirteen ninety. Can anybody explain that? Because if, what happened to those other two? Are those the floors that the lights are off?
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, do you, what happened to eighteen fifty?
That would, in that case, it would be considered rebuilt first.
I'm just going off the top of my memory, but I believe that the West Garage that was approved in the master plan special permit was sixteen ninety. And then, when we went through site plan review for the garage, when we were trying to minimize the height and maximize the number of parking spaces, we came up with a number of thirteen ninety, but that's expandable on the ground. The ground floor has a larger ceiling height and stackers could be added, should the need warrant it. So, that's the difference. It was sixteen ninety to thirteen ninety, something like that. And then, the difference would be made up with stackers if they were needed.
So, we are probably ready to make some kind of vote. Are we, any other discussion we need to have? You all set?
I think I'm set.
So, can you?
You know, I didn't prepare this one.
Got a motion.
I sure did. So, I'll make this motion based on what I'm hearing and then agree, then we can adjust. But I'll make a motion that the planning board deny a special permit for the requested leasing of five hundred spaces based on section nine point oh-five B of the Watertown zoning ordinance.
This is a record, this is just our?
Just us, yes. We're the approving authority.
I'll second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pretty clear, I'm afraid, but.
So, expected to hear something about? So, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda was Arsenal Yard signage request. And no, the request would be for that to be continued to the next meeting. They did not provide you with some additional information that we talked about in the last meeting, so we'll hopefully have that for you in time for the next meeting. And then, the next item was updated on planning projects. There are a number of longer-range planning projects that certainly wanted to keep the planning board aware of. The first one was the community preservation plan. And, you know, I don't know if your member representative wants to add anything, but the committee did hire Golson in order to work on the plan for that group and in terms of the approach to projects, there's a six-month process to work on the plan and then a six-month approximately implementation stage for that, that process. So, and, you know, Jason, if you wanted to add anything?
That's all I was going to say. Thanks.
Okay. So, sorry for stealing your thunder. Didn't mean to do that. Also, the bicycle and pedestrian plan, the town's hired McMahon and Associates to help us work on that. We have had an initial meeting with the bicycle and pedestrian committee, with the consultant, beginning to work through some of the preliminary information. I'm sure there'll be some public meetings coming up shortly, so we'll want to keep you abreast of that and talk about that. But, you know, really exciting opportunity to, to look at the bicycle and pedestrian connections and network throughout town and where the real key connections are. The next one is the Public Arts Master Plan, and we've been working with MAPC on that. A number of people involved with the Public Arts and Culture Committee, Ingrid being one of them. And we've been working with them as a consultant and a steering committee. We're going to have our first public information meeting on that in October and, what was the date?
October thirtieth.
October thirtieth? I thought so. At the middle school. Certainly appreciate all of you to come. You know, it's, again, a pretty exciting opportunity to really talk about public arts in town and how we might do a better job of, of not only encouraging that, but setting up a framework and a structure for how we would approach public arts. The permissible vulnerability preparedness plan. We also hired a consultant, KAL Associates, to work on that. We're just getting started with that process, but looking at some of the issues around the climate and, and, you know, vulnerability and how we prepare for that and deal with that in town. That will also lay the groundwork, and we got a grant in order to do that, that also lay the groundwork for some additional planning studies as well as implementation, that we would move forward with that to, again, create a better preparedness situation and also deal with things like energy conservation, energy reduction, climate issues, a whole host of sustainability-type issues. So, we'll certainly want you to be involved with that as well.
Steve, who's that consultant again, please?
KAL Associates.
KAL?
Yeah.
As in the airline?
Yeah, actually, I might have got that wrong.
Are they located locally or are they somewhere else?
No, they're local. They, they have an office, I forget which town it is, but somewhere local.
Thank you. That was a nice brief summary. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, with no other business, we get standard adjourned?
So with no other business, we get standard earned?